Call to order, the City Council meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. It is now five o'clock. Would a city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Steve Gander, Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassl.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Tim Riappel.
Here.
Henry Tweetin is present. And Mark Demers.
Present.
Those turn current, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder before we move on that due to the voting in the election day, we only can be here until six o'clock.
Six.
So everybody's advised of that. An open forum and opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff or boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come to the podium to do so now. Does anybody at this time want to address the council on items that are not on the You come up, please state your name and your address, please. Come up to the mic and then state your name and address, please.
My name is Joanne Wicker. I live at 403 James Avenue Southeast.
And what would you like to address the council?
Okay, I have a problem. I have contacted a couple of members. I contacted Mr. Murphy and I contacted Mr. Pokorinsky and I contacted Mr. Tweetin. And I wanted to come up here face to face to see you guys, to explain what I was trying to explain on the phone and to tell Mr. Pokorinsky, when I spoke with him, I did not appreciate his smart ass answer that he gave to me. And I'm going to tell you what happened. I live on the corner of Fourth and James and when the snowplow comes out, it used to come out before the dike went up, it used to come out, come down Fourth Street and clean all the way down into Folsom Park, all the way down there to drop the snow. Now we have a dead end there by the dike and they don't come down that side street by my house. Now my garage sits on that side street, so I cannot get a car out if that street don't keep plowed. I have my driveway cleaned and I have my sidewalk cleaned, but unless I can get out on the street and go down Fourth Street to the highway, I'm blocked in. Not only am I blocked in, I'm blocked out. I fell in my kitchen and broke my hip and I had to have the ambulance pick me up. They came to the front, they had to go around to the back because they couldn't get me out the front door because of the way my house is built. You come in the front door, there's a little narrow place there, they couldn't make the turns with the stretcher to take me out the front. They had to take me out the back. Now that street, I don't understand why when they come down Fourth Street Southeast, why they can't come all the way down to the dead end, where the dead end there and just drop the snow there. That's what they can do. And back up and go down. Right now what they do is they come down, they turn and they go around the circle there in James and come down James and that fourth of a block or whatever it is that's there on my side street on Fourth Street doesn't get cleaned. And when I spoke to Mr. Murphy and to Mr. Pokorinsky, they said to me, "That's not a priority street." Well, it may not be a priority for you guys, but it sure as hell is a priority for me because I have been stuck before out on that street and couldn't go up or down or anywhere until somebody come and shovel me out. Now, I don't understand why that plow cannot, as it comes down Fourth Street, why it can't just continue for another half a block to the dead end. I mean, I was told, "Well, they'd have to back up." Well, excuse me, doesn't the snowplow have a reverse? I don't understand. Somebody better explain it to me. I know that it's, I'm the only one on that street because all the houses are gone down there. I'm the only one on that side street. Now it goes down to the park, it goes down to the dike. No, because there's no skating rink down there, there's nothing down there. But I am still on that and I lived in that house since 1960. So somebody better explain to me why that plow cannot open that up. They said, "We do the priority streets, we do the city first. If we have time, when we get done with all of that, we'll come." Well, it's been, you know, I've sat there for two days without a plow coming down that side road that I cannot get out of to get out to the highway. I can't go no place.
I can address that. Yes, I did speak with Ms. Wicker and I have explained this to her as far as how the plowing works. When we do get a snow event, we first we concentrate on the arterial streets, then we go to the collector streets and the side streets. And that is about efficiency. So when the snowplows and the graders go through, they go through and they try to keep those open with as little downtime as possible. So they make the corner, they keep going. The dead end street that she is talking about is actually, they push that to the end and they use the push blade for that. That comes in, it's a separate piece of equipment that comes in and does that later. The lower priority streets, the non-high priority streets, those get done afterwards. As far as like with the, she said with the garage and that, you know, we try to get through those as quickly as possible. However, the same thing with alleys. The alley streets are not, the alleys are not always cleared immediately. Same thing with the through streets, we're concentrating on those. So in this particular case, it was cleared within 24 hours. I was out there at seven o'clock on Sunday morning. It was clear.
Only because I called, Abe. Only because I called, yeah.
No, it was, I did not speak to the Public Works Board, he did not order any changes other than what was already in schedule. So that was already scheduled to be done and it was done in the normal order of process. Nothing changed because of the phone call. Jason, if you'd like to, can speak a little bit as far as how the routes go on that, but it has to do with, they have a route that they develop. So for example, they come down Fourth, they turn onto Forest, they keep going to try to get the collector streets and the side streets going so that traffic can get opened up as soon as possible.
Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, that is correct. We have our arterial streets that we generally do first, they're first in the order and then our collector streets, we do second. After that, we hit dead ends as this is, we do cul-de-sacs, stuff like that at the end because there's less people on them. So we try to get the most people on as fast as we possibly can. In this particular snow event, we decided to do the arterials only because we're anticipating three more inches of snow and possibly rain. And that rain would be better on top of that snow to get off the road. So we opened up their arterials and came back on Sunday. Didn't exactly work as it did last year quite as well because of the warmer street temperatures, but we came back on Sunday and cleaned curb to curb everywhere. So that's kind of our, that's the way that we run our streets.
But explain to me why when you come down Fourth Street from the highway and you come all the way down Fourth Street, why you can't continue for that little piece of quarter of a block to the, and quit there?
You know, it might seem like it's as simple as that and we do have reverse on our motor graders. We could go do that piece, but there's a couple of different reasons why we choose not to do it that way. One is for sheer speed. When we're trying to get the arterial open as fast as we can along that side, it does take time to back up. And if you do every single dead end and every single cul-de-sac, then it's going to take up time. It's not just about your street, it's about all the streets on there. And when we come in, if we push all the snow with the motor grader the way we do on a regular street and don't come in with a push plow on your street, then you're going to end up with half the snow in your yard. And I, you know, we're trying to prevent that as well so we can just push it to the end with the box blade when we come down there. So I guess it's kind of twofold in this case.
But the snow that you push can go past my driveway, it can go past that to where the dike is. The road goes down past my driveway.
And that's what we do with the box blade when we come in there. With the motor grader, we can't push it to the end of your street. It has to go off to the side, one way or the other.
I have lived there since 1960 and I have never had the problem that we now have. And there has to be some type of solution because like I said, until that side street gets opened up, I pay to have my driveway shoveled and I pay to have my sidewalk shoveled and they're there by 8:30 in the morning to clean my walk so that I can get out if I got doctor's appointments or in the case of an emergency. Now, my husband just got out of ICU last week and he may be going back there. Now, if I have to call an ambulance, they can't get in the front, they can't get him out the front. They've got to come in the back.
And they can get in the back. Our fire department is generally the first ones on scene and if they have any issues, they contact Public Works and we will assist them in any case needed.
And how much time is that going to take?
It won't take any because they can get in with their vehicles. I was in my two-wheel drive vehicle driving the collector streets this weekend and there wasn't one of them that I couldn't get down with my little tiny two-wheel drive vehicle in slush and snow or anywhere that there was, so.
Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, and the one thing with the, I guess I've explained this here as well, the rescue truck with the fire department and the ambulance, they have automatic chains on it, they go through quite a bit of snow. And the fire department does watch these snow events and we have had it in the past and it's been pretty rare where the fire department has felt that the snow was getting to the point where they might have, the emergency vehicles might have difficulty getting through. When that does happen, what we do, and he's talking about the timing of that and why it wouldn't take any time at all, is we usually have one of our Public Works guys go to the fire department with a vehicle. And so they are there right on scene. So if they get a call, that the Public Works vehicle plows the route to where they need to go.
Henry.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, I've known Mrs. Wicker since she was a little girl. I've known her family for years and years and her husband. Important thing as far as the mayor and members of the City Council are concerned, we have situations where because of the design of streets, ends of streets, we get problems in snow. We have turnarounds and so forth. The thing, we'll solve a lot of problems here and if every council member and the mayor go down and take a look at it, there's snow. These problems are not insurmountable. Now, she's an older person now, her husband is sick, I've known him and his family for many years too. Let's take and go on and do the inspection like we should. And we might have, I know we've got some problems elsewhere. When they occurred, everybody in the council takes a look at it. Now, the thing she's concerned about, her husband is sick. If you have to get an ambulance or some other vehicle down there, she wants to make it fast. When you get, take and start rescuing people who are ill or disabled some way, time is of the essence. And if that was your mother and dad, what would you do? Would you stay here and say it's too bad? No, that's not how we treat people. If we treated people any different than what I'm suggesting, she wouldn't have stayed here all these years. But that's why we're here, to serve people. Never forget that. And that's why I'm here. Now, maybe some of these aldermen who live out there want to make a comment.
Mr. Pokorinsky, when I called you and talked to you and I tried to explain the situation and I told you, I said, you know, before the dike went up, they used to push the snow all the way down from the highway, all the way down into Folsom Park, past where the skating rink was. And you said to me, "That was before the dike. What do you want us to do, take the dike down?" No, I didn't appreciate that. I thought that was a very smart ass answer.
Well, I'm sorry you took it that way. My point was, is that you seem to be blaming the dike on the current situation and my point is, is the dike is protecting everybody and that's not, if you want to blame the dike for...
I didn't suggest that the dike be taken down. I never said that. I said that the snow used to be pushed all the way down. Why can't it just be pushed past my driveway for gosh sakes?
I think Mr. Stordahl and Mr. Murphy have answered the city's position on how we clear streets. And as Mr. Stordahl said, if we give everyone preferential treatment that has a cul-de-sac or a dead end, it would take much longer to get the main streets open and we are not going to do that. And I disagree with your characterization of the conversation we had. I'm sorry you feel that way.
That's what you said.
Mr. Grassl.
Just, I mean, and I feel for you, Joanne. So if we do this, if we change our pattern for you, then we've got 8,000 other people we have to change our pattern for. I'm included. I'm on a cul-de-sac road, that plow goes by my place to the left, it doesn't stop, come back and clean my cul-de-sac out every time. My wife has to be at work in the morning at five, six o'clock. So I feel for you, but, and I feel for everybody in our community. But we can't, if we change for one, we've got to change for 8,000. And I feel for you and I just think you need to be able to trust what Jason is saying, that we have the equipment to get them there if they need to get you there.
I have been snowed in on that side street for three days. I have been snowed in on that side street for three days before they came with a plow to clean it out.
What years were those, what year was that? Can I ask?
I can't tell you just right offhand, but yes, since the dike has gone up, I have been snowed in there for three days before they've cleaned that side street.
I think, I appreciate you coming tonight and I know that Mr. Stordahl and Mr. Murphy are well aware of what your issue is. And I'm sure that everybody's going to make their effort to make sure that there's not an issue. And if there's...
I can't get a car, I can back out of my driveway, but I can't get out to the street. I cannot go anywhere. I can't go anywhere because I can't get out to the highway.
Will you let me finish my comments? Everybody's going to make their effort to make sure that you can get out or get somebody in. If there's an issue where the ambulance or the rescue can't get in there, they'll come over with the plow and that's what they've done for years. They have that. So every effort can be made.
And by that time, it might be too late.
If you want to keep interrupting, we can go all night on this. I understand what your issue is, ma'am, but you need to understand that you brought your issue to us. Mr. Stordahl's addressed it, Mr. Murphy's addressed it. And I think what we need to do is have Mr. Stordahl and Mr. Murphy let us know if there's any other issues that do arise, okay? And I appreciate it.
Mr. Olsted.
Mr. Mayor.
The only thing I would say is, as you know, inside of our guidelines, if there's any latitude at all, we're going to try to work with you. I hope you know that. Inside of our guidelines, if there's any latitude, we'll work with you. Yours is a special situation with medical needs and whatnot. We have a heart. And so if we can, inside of our guidelines, take care of you as best we possibly can, that's what we're going to do.
Mr. Gander, why did this all of a sudden change since the dike has been put up? I mean, the route that the snowplow took before was all the way from the highway down Fourth Street, all the way down to the park. Okay? And then they turned around and did whatever they wanted to do, but they pushed the snow down to the park. Why cannot that snowplow? Somebody has to give me a reason why that snowplow that comes down Fourth cannot go a little bit further and push it down past my driveway onto that where I've got that piece that's landscaped. It can push the snow there.
You know, when you stop a motor grader in the middle of its tracks and try to back it up, there's quite a ridge of snow that it has to back over. Okay, so there's that. It doesn't blow it all completely out the side, it leaves a ridge. And so they use a front push type plow so that at the end of the push, it does not have to back over its own ridge to get back out of there. So it's a whole different piece of equipment actually that they use to accomplish that. But inside of our guidelines, just know, you've been heard. I know these people, they have a heart and they care about all people in our community, especially older folks who you really have made a commitment to stay here all these years as Mr. Tweetin said. And we respect that, we love that you're here. You're an important part of us. You carry our history and a lot of wisdom and whatnot. We'll try to treat you as best we can inside of our policy.
I hire somebody now to do my driveway and I hire somebody to do my sidewalks. I imagine I could probably hire somebody to clean out enough of the streets so I could get a car or two if I have to. I already pay to have my dike mowed because you guys don't take very good care of it. But I would really prefer not to. I think that is probably the city's job to clean that street and not three days after it snows.
Okay, so...
If I have to get out...
Ma'am, we need to move on. I do, Mr. Stordahl has explained everything to you and like Mr. Gander said, we'll do everything we can to do. Okay? I appreciate you coming in. Okay? Thank you. So move on to approval minutes for the approval of October 17th regular meeting, October 24th work session, October 30th special meeting, and minute summary for October 30th closed session. Move. Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Grassl. Roll call.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Schedule bedlighting is none, schedule public carings none. Consent agenda, items under consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. Whoever council members may be requesting the items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion actions they choose. Would any member like items five through 15 polled at all? If not, a motion to approve consent agenda, please. Move. Move by Grassl, second by Demers. Roll call, please.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Acknowledged, received reports of officers, boards and commissions, regular meeting minutes of water, light and power and building commission for October 5th, 2017. Communication is none, old business is none, new business number 17, consider adopting resolution number 17-11-83, adopting assessment rule number 340 for 2017. Assessment job number one, street improvements for a total assessment of $1,5224.45. Move. Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Abstain.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 18, consider adopting the findings and decision regarding determination of special circumstances to allow private infrastructure include private wastewater, force main and replat of Lot 1, Block 2, cul-de-vue addition, planned unit development concept plan. Move. Move by Grassl.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 18, consider adopting resolution number 22, fourth series of meaning of city code title, excuse me, Business Regulation, Chapter 110, entitled General Business Licensing Regulations by adding Section 110.36, entitled Garage or Rimming Sale, and by adopting by reference code, Chapter 10, General Provisions in Section 10.99, which among other things contain penalty provisions, first reading.
Move.
Move by Tweetin.
Second.
Second by Pakshavinsky. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 19, consider adopting resolution number 17-11-84, accepting and awarding the bid of 2016, city project number one, wastewater decommissioning to Burski exuding for a total amount of $4,419,300. Move. Move by Vetter.
Second.
Second by Pakshavinsky. Any questions or discussion? Riappel.
I've got one question. And what we discussed, this is for the city engineer, for what we discussed on the portion of what was addressed, there'll be no change orders, correct, for that particular part of the project?
That's correct. I mean, I can guarantee there's going to be no change orders throughout the duration of the project, but again...
For that portion that we talked about.
For leaving all the material on site, that's correct.
Good, because I would vote no on that.
Mr. Tweetin.
I'd like to make a comment. I made these comments before. The one thing that came out, there was a question of what happened in regard to this particular bid. It appears that to me from what was said, that number one is you had eight people bid, six of them of the eight backed away. But all during this process, one of the Zabro boys kept asking questions of our engineer. And apparently, one of the things that happened, he kept on questioning pollution control. And pollution control appeared to make some changes in conditions. And to me, that's a defective bid. And I'm going to vote no against it. We can rebid it and as I indicated in my prior discussion, that we move slowly, we clarify each step very deliberately so that there's no question that we lit bids again. It's fair and equitable. And that's what we're supposed to do up here. I don't think this takes and passes a smell test, to be honest with you.
Anything else, Mr. Tweetin?
I've no further questions.
To answer your question too, and I don't appreciate you accusing the WSN engineering firm of not answering the questions or doing something that's not ethically right. Nothing was changed when both companies put their bids in. I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate the fear factor and lies that you're trying to portray that something happened. There was nothing that happened and we went over it, gone through it, discussed it, and because you don't want to accept the fact that things were done correctly, you keep continually saying that there's something done wrong. And I don't appreciate it. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Abstain.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 20, consider adopting the findings and decision regarding determination of special circumstances to allow private infrastructure include private wastewater, force main and replat of Lot 1, Block 2, cul-de-vue addition, planned unit development concept plan. Move. Move by Grassl.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 21. Consider adopting resolution number 17-11-85, approving the hiring of Travis, is it Ram Bell? Is that how you pronounce it? Okay, sorry. As a truck driver at salary of 16.61 per hour.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? Not roll call, please.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes. Motion is carried. Need a motion to suspend rules. Suspension of rules, please.
Move.
Move.
Second.
By Grassel, second by Riappel. To vote on suspended rules, consider hiring of truck driver. Mr. Grassel made the motion. Mr. Riappel's made second. So, we have consider adopting resolution, excuse me, resolution 17-11-86, approving the hiring of Justin Johnson as a truck driver at salary of 16.61 per hour. Motion?
We need to vote on suspending rules first.
Thank you, Mr. Vetter.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want any roll call? Go ahead.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes. Okay, now, your motion.
Move.
Mr. Grassel and second by Mr. Vetter. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 23. Consider approving the agreement between the City of East Grand Forks and Minnesota Department of Revenue for the collection of local sales and use tax.
Move.
Move by Riappel, second by Pachivinsky. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 23. Consider approving the agreement between the City of East Grand Forks and Minnesota Department of Revenue for the collection of local sales and use tax.
Move.
Move by Riappel, second by Pachivinsky. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes. Motion is carried. Mayor Gander?
I was out of town this past weekend. I honestly haven't gotten the details of the passing of Robin Solom. Got to know him through the years. His son and my son are the same age and, and I found him to be a very good individual, a good human being, good sense of humor, but also a very hard worker. I remember seeing him out on the curb on community cleanup, working really hard all these years. And I just want to acknowledge the great service that he's been to our city through the years and how much I think he'll be missed in so many ways. Also a reminder for why we live where we do, it's close proximity to very nice deer hunting country where I was this past weekend. And so, to everyone who's been out hunting, hopefully everybody made it home safely and didn't get too cold and too wet. It was plenty cold and wet out there. And we're in the middle of it and so, I hope everybody has a safe and productive hunt. That's all I got.
Vetter?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Pachivinsky?
Good job to Public Works on mosquito control. I have no other smart remarks to add. Thank you.
Mr. Riappel?
Just a reminder, Veterans Day breakfast at the Senior Center this Saturday. If you're a veteran 55 and older, bring your military card and breakfast is free. Otherwise, for the rest of us, it's $5.
Are you going to help cook?
Not me.
Mr. Tweetin?
I have nothing else to say.
Mr. Demers?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Mr. Grassel?
Just on Mayor Gander's comment about hunting, a friend and I were on our way at 3:30 a.m. on Thursday or Friday morning. We picked ourselves up a nice little doe, I believe she was, that ran into the side of us to pick up. So, we, we scored one. So, that's it.
Is that in town?
That was in town, on the corner of 8th and 13th.
Good one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I forgot. Last week on Halloween, I had, was out trick or treating with the kids and noticed, there was a lot of kids out in our area or whatever and noticed that there was some flashing lights out at the intersection and thought, oh, oh. First reaction was, oh, you know, what happened or something. And, but got over there and there was two officers handing out candy and talking to the kids and their families. And everybody walked away feeling pretty good about that, that gesture and the effort that it was. Luckily, it wasn't too cold. But it was appreciated by a lot of the people out there and want, and a lot of the people, and myself included, want to pass forward that commendation to whoever decided to do it and took the initiative. And it was appreciated. Thank you.
We have done that for 100 years. For whatever reason, we're here to gather a little more attention. Good, good. We received an email. I don't know. I think everybody received it. They're looking to have a, send us a special meeting, joint meeting with, on future bridge location on Thursday, November 16th, from 5:30 to 7:00. If you can attend, please let Megan know or do you want them to reply to Peggy?
They can reply to Peggy. I will just, wanted to inform you guys that I will post it, that a coroner may be present so you're all able to attend.
I have one of these in your email this afternoon.
Where's it at?
At this time, they're, I don't think they have a...
I think she mentioned the townhouse, to me, anyway.
It's not in the email at this time, so. But if you can do that, please. Thank you. I have nothing further.
I just have one thing. I just want to say the, we did have the specialist, the pool specialist out today on site from St. Louis. He reviewed that, spent a few hours out there and meeting with Park Superintendent Hooton and I, and I believe it went really well. So, I, we look forward to his report.
Mr. Olsted?
Nothing at this time unless anybody has a question for me.
Mr. Emery?
I have nothing.
Anything from the department heads? See none, entertain a motion adjournment.
Move.
By Grassel.
Second.
Second by Vetter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned.
I don't think anybody tried to cannonball.